Good afternoon, everyone, and happy new year as well. Please remain standing whilst the mayor's chapel in offer prayers.
We commence in the name of our Lord, the most kind, the most beneficent. As we have gathered here today for a council meeting, we begin by reflecting on the sayings of the Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. The Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, has said in a hadith, a saying, that charity is due for every joint in each person. On every day the sun comes up, to act justly between two people is a form of charity. To help a man with his mount, lifting him onto it and hoisting up his belongings onto it, is a form of charity. A good word is a charity, and removing a harmful thing from the road is charity. The Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, has further said that when a man dies, his deeds come to an end, except for three things. Sadaqatun jariyah, which is translated as ceaseless charity, a knowledge which is beneficial, or a virtuous descendant who prays for him. Reflecting upon these sayings, we understand that good deeds we do here benefit us in the hereafter, and that there are many forms of charity. The work we do from these chambers does not only consist of us doing our jobs by fulfilling our duties and responsibilities as public servants. Rather, it also acts as a form of charity. We have gathered here today in a spirit of cooperation and love for our communities in Preston to conduct matters of business. O our Lord, guide our hearts and our minds in fairness, right thought and speech. Help us to respect one another's differing views and positions as we strive together. Towards drawing together of opinions to the one cause, which is to provide a better life for the people of this city. Grant us wisdom, so that our debate may reach a successful outcome. O our Lord, through your knowledge, we seek the best decision from our choices, and by your power, we seek ability from you. And we ask you from your immense bounty, for indeed you have power and you are own knowing. O our Lord, decree and facilitate for us goodness and blessings in our decisions, in our affairs and in our livelihoods. O our Lord, enable us to see truth as truth, and grant us the ability to follow it. And enable us to recognise falsehood as falsehood, and grant us the ability to refrain from it. You almighty have said in chapter Ibrahim, the chapter of Abraham, that if you are grateful, I will certainly give you more. We therefore ask you to grant us Taufir, meaning ability to be grateful in our lives, and blessings in our provisions and livelihoods. We ask you, O our Lord, to give us in this world that which is good, and in the hereafter that which is good. And as we remember those who have passed away and have been killed during this turbulent time of the Middle Eastern Gazan war. We pray that you grant their loved ones ease and help them enjoy their pain with patience through your infinite mercy or mercy upon one. And may you heal and cure all those who are suffering, and may the oppressed be free from all kinds of oppression. We close our prayer with praise for you, O our Lord, the Lord of the worlds. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. And there are no plans for fire alarms. Just if you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure all mobile phones are switched off or on silent. Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details should you require one. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Can I please remind all members that whilst we can disagree politically, please remain respectful to each other whilst dealing with council business. Now, members of the public and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of local government bodies regulations 2014, the press and the public may film, audio record, photograph, and use social media whilst the meeting is in progress. For part A items only, and as long as no disruption is caused to the meeting, anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now, Saturday will commemorate Holocaust Memorial Day, which encourages remembrance in a world scared by genocide. The 27th January marks the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz-Burkina, the largest Nazi death camp. Holocaust Memorial Day is an international day to remember the six million Jews murdered during the Holocaust, alongside the millions of other people killed under Nazi persecution of other groups and in genocide that followed in Cambodia, Rwanda, Bosnia and Darfur. Together, we bear witness for those who endured genocide and honour the survivors and all those whose lives were changed beyond recognition. I would like to invite anyone who wishes to come along to a commemorative service marking Holocaust Memorial Day and other global genocides. The service will take place at St George, the Martyr Church, Georges Road of Loon Street on Friday, 26th January at 11am. Can we now please stand for a minute silence as a mark of respect? Thank you. Thank you. Now, depending on how we progress today, I may adjourn to take a short comfort break, but we will see how we proceed. Item number two, are there any declarations of interest? Can members indicate if they have any disclosable pecuniary interest or personal and prejudicial interest in the items being discussed on the agenda?
Mr Mayor, I need to declare for item 18, Preston Youth Zone, that as a trustee-director of the Preston Youth Zone charity, I will leave the chamber for item 18. Thank you.
I'll need to leave the chamber for item nine. Thank you. So I have two personal interests in item 12, which is a notice of motion. My wife works for the NHS Lancashire and South Cumbria ICB, and I've also had previous pay contracts with the Lancashire Sexual Health Clinic.
Yeah, I was advised that all these people who have declared the interest, can you please specify whether it's personal or prejudicial? Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Item number three, minutes of a meeting of a council held on 14 December 2023. Are members happy that I signed the minutes as a correct record? Thank you, councillor Igbell. Item number four is a question from members of the public, and we have one question submitted from Mr Blundell. Yeah, I was told Mr Blundell, for whatever the reason, he's not here. So I'll read out the question. Also, can I remind you? Okay, so obviously I don't need to read this, so I'll just read the question. The question is, when did Preston City Council start charging blue badge holders to park in the city car parks? And was there any consultation process before charges were implemented? Councillor Bailey, please.
Yes, I'll happily answer this question. So this city council operates for pay and stay car parks in the city centre. So Avram Car Park, there are three dedicated disabled bays on the ground floor of the car park, and they are free to use if members display the blue badges. Trinity Square Car Park, there is no disabled parking spaces on this car park, so blue badge holders will have to pay on that particular car park. Penny Street Car Park, there are two designated disabled bays for blue badge users to use, and obviously the signage does replicate that. These you have to pay for. In 2018, obviously, we did some kind of consultation when the car park was created, and obviously that was picked up then. Hill Street Car Park as well, there has been some changes to that particular car park since 2016. Beforehand, blue badge users could park anywhere they want to in any of the 70 spaces. However, since 2016, there are two disabled bays that people can use, free of charge still, out of the 70 total spaces. In addition to this, there are, in addition to these four pay and stay car parks in the city centre, we also provide 32 disabled spaces at the Chapel Yard Car Park, located off Loon Street, where blue badge holders can stay up to four hours free of charge. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bailey. We will send Mr Blundell the response via email anyway. Thank you. Item number five, we will take item five, which is the question, to cabinet members, chairs of committee and representatives of outside bodies. Members are entitled to ask a question of any cabinet member or chair of a committee within their portfolio or terms of reference. And only one supplementary question may be asked, provided it is relevant to the original question. We haven't received any written notification for questions for members appointed to serve on outside bodies. If anyone has any question to ask on the information items on the agenda, including the special urgency decisions, they should do so at this point, as another opportunity will not be given when we reach those items. Councillor Potter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This question is to the leader. Preston City Council was one of four partners of part of the city deal. Last Thursday, it was announced that North West Preston would definitely not be getting new schools to the earliest of 2027, and potentially not at all. This goes with vastly watered down health services that were planned for North West Preston, a part of our North West master plan. Why should residents in the North West of Preston have any faith that those things that were promised to them will be delivered?
Thank you very much for the question and happy new year, best of the city this year. Yes, I mean, the city deal is a legacy scheme that we've inherited in the current administration under my leadership, obviously. It was signed in 2012-13. It was afforded by Nick Clegg at the time, and there was all party support for it. I do actually share your concerns, if I'm honest about it, because what we've seen is a change in the funding mechanism for city deal. So we've changed the new homes bonus to the amount they could actually get into the city deal pot, the infrastructure has diminished. The county council did say in the last cabinet report they would deliver three new schools. It was also in the North West Preston master plan through the planning process. So I think it's always good to say if you're going to do something, that you do do it. There may only be three new schools, two primary, one secondary. However, we are trying to make sure that we use our influence, making sure the city deal did what it said it would do originally, which is deliver infrastructure that does actually correspond with the amount of house building that's taking place and the population growth. However, we do feel we have got some positive benefits. If you look around Preston, we've got the Preston Western Distributor, the 217, 7 million road network, we've got the East West Link Road, Broughton Bypass, subsidy of bus services and improvements to the canal tow path for walking and cycling. Additionally, 7,000 of the new homes built, which city deal has supported, has seen nearly 2,000 affordable homes. So we do feel we're trying to make the best of the situation we've inherited, but both myself and South Ribble as partners want to make sure that they actually stick to what they agreed and try to make it relevant for 2024. Because when it was signed in 2012-13, it was very different days. There's a focus now on the environmental crisis we're facing, so I'm happy to have any conversations with yourself to move this forward, John, because obviously you all represent that area. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that answer, leader. I suppose the question that all our residents in North and West Preston will be asking is that hundreds of millions of pounds of their money has gone into these schemes, and they will say, yeah, wonderful, the Edith Wickley Gray and all the roads. But actually, we don't just want homes, we want communities being built. So without schools and health centres and everything else, that is not what was envisioned. And I suppose an added concern will be, I think councillor Rawlinson alluded to this at ONS last week, is that a part of city deal was going to fund our animate, and that will affect our borrowing costs. So given that they don't have the money to do the schools, don't have the money to do a health centre, how concerned are you they're going to have the money to fulfil their obligations to animate?
All I can say, John, is we're negotiating very hard to ensure we get the best deal, including an extra funding for animate for the linear parking for the Harris, we're older than we've found, and we continue doing it. From the county's perspective, they're making the argument existing schools are expanding to fulfil the demand, and obviously they're responsible for it. But as I said earlier, they have said publicly, and we've said as part of the city deal process and in our planning documents, that we would like to see new schools, and I'm not going to shift from that position, that's the reality of it. I just think we've got to look at, you know, we can't really take that much politics out of this, John, because, you know, it had all party support at the time. Myself was a bit cynical about it. I preferred something more alternative, but all three parties, the Preston Council backed it, and obviously we'll be making sure that when we do sit down with the county, South Ribble and Homes England, we negotiate a city deal that's going to provide the infrastructure, but also provide more affordable homes, support local jobs and local businesses, and do what we can to do things like get the pension fund to invest a little more, because that was part of the original city deal, which they've renewed on to a degree. So we'll be doing all that going forward. Thank you for the question.
Yeah. Do you want to come in, councillor May? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to comment whilst I agree with an awful lot of councillor Potter's queries and questions, particularly regarding the schools and health provisions that were promised. I'm speaking now as the Labour leader of Lancashire that signed the city deal in 2013, alongside the Labour leader of Preston and the Conservative leader of South Ribble at the time. At the time, most of the deal had been negotiated by the former Tory administration at LCC, but at the time, we all considered it would give massive, massive benefits to the people of Preston in particular. And we signed it in very good faith, we thought. Unfortunately, that was signed by the coalition government. Since then, the Conservative government has actually reduced the amount of money that can be retained in new homes bonus, and that in itself put the business argument for the whole deal at risk. And whilst I do have some sympathy with LCC, they are the providers of schools. They cannot get away from that fact that they have a duty to provide school places. And it shouldn't come as a surprise that there is now a drastic shortage of places across Preston. And despite the fact that they're not getting the money that they totally expected from the city deal because of changes in government legislation, they still have a duty to provide those schools, and I, along with other Preston county councillors, will be pushing them to just do just that.
Thank you, councillor May. Councillor Burrow.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Jenny has said most of what I wanted to say, but specifically on the schools issue, there are additional school places coming through, but that is in the doubling of the number of places at Leah County Primary School on Greifstown Lane on the Larchers Estate, which is the wrong place. That is a clear wrong decision by LCC. They can turn around and say they've increased the number of places, but it's not where the need is. And people will be travelling two or three miles back and forth from the Cotum area to Larchers, clogging up the roads, leading to real traffic issues and road safety issues in that area, but they can at least claim that they've provided some additional school places. It's a mess by the Conservative-controlled Lancashire County Council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Burrow. Have you any supplementary questions? Thank you. Councillor Ritten, please.
That was timely. The school, by the way, David, obviously, all schools were asked if they wanted to extend, and some of those schools took it up, but I'm sure the schools issue will run and run. Can I ask the leader a question about the leaders' report, please? We see that councillor Wise is going to Italy in March. Yes. I'd just like to know, is that really necessary, going to Italy? The cost to this authority of councillor Wise going to Italy, and the length of time that she'll be there, please. Thank you.
It's very minimal. A lot of this cost is actually provided by the cooperative councils innovation network, in which we're one member along with dozens of others. There were dozens of authorities looking at that, and within Preston, we're very clear that we want to do things very differently, that we feel the current economic model is not benefiting many of our communities. And look at examples internationally, in Italy, in trying to actually foster links with those places, town, cities and regions, is something that's very positive, and obviously we're getting a lot of funding coming our way, I would say, just by some of the bold ideas that we've got coming forward. So I think it does justify it. The cost is quite minimal. It's actually a lot less, a lot of conferences that people can get paid to go to in London, so I do think it is justified. And again, it's Valery and an officer that's going, and I think that is standard practice across the, I think there's about a dozen councils going, really. It's not just those, it's others. So I think it is justified, and I think we can always learn from new ideas, Sue. Thank you.
Councillor Handshaw, you want to come in?
Yeah, can I just say, I'm struggling to hear, Jenny's struggling to hear. Can we turn the equipment up, the volume up, so we can hear better? Thank you. I do, Mr Mayor. Should I raise my voice? And also, councillor Hall, you'll notice the clock is correct. Now you're back. Right. Thank you, Matthew, for that, although you did sort of dodge the answer to how much it's actually costing. The Cooperative Council's Innovation Network, of which we are a member, there are three different levels of membership. So perhaps you could just tell me whether we do it as just a normal membership, or whether we do it on the population fee, or whether we do it on the budget fee. So how much does it cost to be a member of the Cooperative Council's Innovation Network? Obviously, we're paying for this. Thank you.
Do you know what, Sue? Believe it or not, I don't have that answer. I don't want the precise figure of our membership fees of every single organisation we're part of. My understanding is that it's a standard fee that applies equally to everyone based on a certain formula, and we pay it just like we pay other councils. I can get that information, but I mean, this is a European trip, and I'm sure you do fly to European cities for holidays. It's not as expensive as it was once. As I said, this council and many officers and members have been to conferences that could cost £599, and that was seen to be justified. This costs, I believe, considerably less, including the membership of the organisation. So, you know, let's not be afraid of new ideas and learning from other regions of Europe that are doing things very differently that we can benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bailey, do you want to come in?
Yeah, just really briefly to add, when I was obviously current member for community wealth building in 2019, about, literally about two months before Covid, I went on a trip to Amsterdam, obviously in my role as community wealth. No, I know, correct. And obviously, it's just to add that, obviously, whilst I was at the table in Amsterdam, we were there being represented, obviously, as Preston, members from London, Venice, Florence, Barcelona, cities all across Europe were there, and obviously it's incredibly beneficial. And obviously, just to point out, that didn't cost Preston City Council any money at all, but it was a fantastic trip. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reesback.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can you all hear me all right? Yeah, good. Thanks. My question is to the leader, and first of all, Matthew, all the best for 2024. It's related to surface water flooding and climate change, and the question is, given that the UK can expect more rainfall in the future due to climate change, can the leader of the council let us know what influence Preston City Council is bringing to bear upon Lancashire County Council to ensure that the latter is bidding effectively for government funding to help our city put in place measures to mitigate against the dangers of surface water flooding?
Happy New Year, Tony, and thanks for advancing this question. I think we've got to look at this from a multi-agency approach, because our officers and ourselves as an authority will work in not just with the county council, but United Utilities and the Environment Agency, where we have officers that attend these multi-agency meetings and other things. I mean, for example, the Environment Agency seeks to prevent flooding from rivers, and importantly, rivers, major water courses. We're supporting new schemes like flood defences as part of the Preston and South Ribble flood scheme, and also this goes to be one, I believe, at Highgate Park off Garston Road, which is operated at the moment. We also work with United Utilities, that's the agency that's tasked with resolving surface water flooding in built-up areas. Again, there's a multimillion scheme being progressed for Hoyos Lane, and there was 140 million scheme back in 2010, which has reduced discharges to the river, which has also reduced flooding. LCC can also serve notices on landowners, and obviously, as an authority, we're asking them to do a lot more on that when needed. They can also issue consents to discharge for a water course and our planning department get involved in that. And then there's also meetings that we have quarterly, operational making space to water meetings held by LCC with Environment Agency, United Utilities, Canal and Rivers Trust, that seek to report flooding issues. And what we do do is when our officers are attending those meetings, you know, if there's a need to lobby government protection money, we do do that. But I think we've got to look at this in the context of what we've had, because we're in a situation where I believe the Environment Agency has had a two-thirds real cut. We've had, obviously, cuts to local government. We've got United Utilities, which obviously is in a pretty bad state, where a lot of dividends are being paid to shareholders, and obviously, there's sewage spills and continual leakages. I think the Labour Party is saying now that we need I think the Labour Party is saying now that we need to have a Cobra-style task force on flooding that'll check drains before winter. We need that kind of change of mindset to make sure this doesn't happen again. So we'll continue to lobby when needed for new resources, but I do honestly think that if we don't do things like tackle the climate crisis, and I think LCC should be doing a lot more on that, then that's a big part of it. They need to be more assertive in how we're actually dealing with the climate crisis because we need a fundamental change to actually stop things like flooding by ensuring atmosphere and the environment is a lot healthier. So I hope that answers your question. And any supplementary, please do come back.
Yeah, are you on a supplementary question?
Yeah, thanks for that, Matthew. Actually, I sent the question to you by email on Sunday evening. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but in the meantime, for example, it's come to my attention that Fileborough Council has a thirty-point plan in place for dealing with surface water flooding. Do we, Preston City Council, have a similar contingency?
I think we've got to look at it in a multi-agency approach. The statutory body in terms of local government, as I explained, is LCC. They lead on it. Obviously, there's other partners that they work with, including ourselves, we're statutory partner. Obviously, we're lobbying for as much investment and as much influence and as much prevention as possible, but it's not our main responsibility. I'm happy to look at this. I'll have any meeting with you about this. But I'm confident our officers who report back to us when things are urgently need to be dealt with, are actually dealing with this in a very positive way. And I honestly think that the key problem to this is firstly, the fact we've had austerity. So local government and government departments have been cut to the bone when these things crop up. And also they need to tackle the climate emergency more assertively. And if you look at the Tory County Council's plan for tackling the climate emergency, it's not particularly impressive compared to what we're doing. It's not as ambitious. And if they did that, that would then reduce potentially the risks of flooding and other things. So I think it's a holistic approach we need to look at, but I'm open to any conversation about seeing what we can do as a district in addition to what we're doing already. And I suggest you have a conversation with a very long-serving officer called Russell Reese, who's been with this authority for many years and works really, really intensely with all parties, including LCC on, you know, preventing risks for flooding. So happy to have a chat afterwards if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Maine.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. As luck would have it, I was actually at a scrutiny meeting this morning and one of the reports was Water Resource Management. And obviously, LCC is the lead local flood organisation. And they spelled out an awful lot of what they are doing and how they are working with other partners. Matthew is quite right. It's not something that any one agency can manage on their own. It has to be done in partnership. Sadly, one of the biggest partners that we should be working with, United Utilities, had not been called to the meeting, which is a big remiss as far as I am concerned. But LCC, their flood managers are happy to give advice to planning authorities. They are responsible for suds that directly impact the surface water onto the highway, but they're not responsible for suds and drainage that private developers work on. However, obviously, private developers, if they want their network to be adopted by highways, then it's got to be done to a standard. But the LCC are very happy to give, to call to any planning authorities and give help and explanation and guidance on the kind of things that they can look out for. And I'm very pleased to say that Preston City Council has taken up on that offer and we have had the advice and guidance. So it does help us in our planning decisions. And they are happy to come back next year when, obviously, as we know, legislation keeps changing. So they're happy to come back. So we're doing what we can, but we can't do it on our own. And as for Wire, they have a very, very long sea border and a huge Wire River estuary. I imagine that it's in their own residents' safety interest to be keeping a very close watch on flood defences.
Yeah, thank you. Constable Endless, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, my diction's firm enough, Constable Hall. My question is up to the cabinet member who's responsible for levelling up. I'm not too sure who it is just at the moment, but I'm sure the leader will pass the question on or answer it himself. I read with interest, my phone pings at me every morning and it's this sort of social media thing or whatever, called in your area or what have you. It's all a bit trendy for me, but I read with interest about the tram bridge and that the plans will be going out for consultation. So my question is relatively simple. What sort of time is on the consultation? When is it actually going to go out for public consultation? And quite simply, what type of consultation will it be? Thank you.
We will provide a written answer on that one. I don't know the detail of everything that we're doing in its most intimate form, but obviously this is part of our levelling up scheme and it should actually have been out there in public documentation, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. So I think you probably do know anyway, possibly. But it will be out there in a document. What we'll do is we'll get you a written answer. But obviously, we're proud of the fact we've secured this funding through the level of scheme. Obviously, it's going to be a great project when it's done and obviously want to make sure as many residents and organisations do respond to it going forward. I think it's clear what we're going to do within the prospectus. I mean, obviously, we do need to go through a consultation, but we want to replace a bridge and obviously look at it designs and other things. So we'll get that information to you going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you any supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, just, yeah, thank you for your answer, Matt, and I'm sure you will provide me with a written answer. I think, don't you agree, is my question, that, you know, timescales are really of the essence with this particular scheme?
Obviously I do, but I think you've got to put this into context with everything this council's doing. If you look at what we're doing with levelling up, with Share Prosperity, with Towns Fund, with community wealth building, we're tackling the climate emergency. We're doing so, so much and obviously it's sometimes difficult to keep a lid on everything at the same time. So obviously, you know, what we need is local government to fund us properly because we need officers to be able to do all this in an efficient manner. And our officers under stress and honest about it just by the amount of workload and the sheer ambition of our authority. So I think that's a plea really. We need a change of government. We need to make sure that we do have the funding to provide the staff to actually do all these things and make sure that it's done in a timely manner because the amount of work our officers are doing is huge. Some of them work in seventy-eight hours a day, sorry, a week, and it shouldn't be like that. We need to be properly resourced to make sure we can deal with all these schemes and all demands on our services easily. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Brown. Constable Hindle, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a question for the leader. Play streets are residential roads that can be temporarily, I can't say it, temporarily shut in order to make it safer for children to play outside in their homes and they're resident-led. Lancashire County Council recently agreed to make it easier for local residents to apply for the creation of play streets. As a women's officer, do you agree that I, alongside cabinet member councillor Jennifer Meehan, can investigate how Preston City Council can enable this scheme?
Councillor Hindle, it sounds like a very good idea. It could be done safely and in a way that's going to benefit children, which it seems it's been done. I believe it's doing currently in Rosendale. It's been explored. So I'm happy to take that forward. And obviously, we need Jennifer involved in that as well because things like a play strategy, children, young people strategy, it's all part of the same thing. But anything that's new and creative that can actually engage kids with closing streets down and how they can play in that area, I think it's a really good idea. And it's obviously linked to what we're doing about having a more creative city where people could interact, actually take part in activity which is enjoyable. So I'm happy to take that forward with yourself as lead member for women and Jennifer as well, as a relevant cabinet member. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you any supplementary questions, Constable Hindle?
No, I haven't, but if anyone wants any more details, I can happily provide them.
Thank you. Constable Rigby, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a question for Constable Henshaw, a member for climate change. Carol, can you please tell us any progress made on the climate jury, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for this question. I was hoping somebody would ask it because it's all happening at the moment. It's great. And so the climate jury is having its first official meeting on the first of February, so I'm really looking forward to that. But in the meantime, what's been happening behind the scenes is we had an advisory group set up and that consists of different sort of stakeholders and community representatives. So we've got kind of communities in there. We've got the racial equality council, we've got the Preston Faith Government, we've got Preston Bus, we've got Unison. So all these make up the advisory group. And then the role of the advisory group is to make sure that the process is done fairly and rigorously. They will help choose the commentators as well, that the jury are then going to start interrogating. And so that's all been going on. The advisory group have met three times now. And one of their roles was also to agree a question to go out to the residents of Preston because the question had to be punchy, eye-catching, attractive, so that people didn't just look at the letter and bin it straight away. So all those letters, six thousand letters went out around Christmas time to, say, six thousand households. And we had about ninety people respond to express their interest in sitting on this jury. They had to be able to commit to the eight sessions over February and March. And then out of those ninety people that have expressed an interest, we have chosen a jury of thirty, which is totally almost spot-on representative of the demographics of Preston as per the last census. So we've got the right percentage of men and women, ethnicity, disability, all the different, the multiple indices of deprivation, so health, education, all the inequalities. So we've got a truly representative jury of Preston and it will be really exciting to see how it progresses. I'm also glad you asked me because a lot of the advisory group want to observe the jury in action. And that's kind of like a bit of a no-no. So we're going to allow four and the leaders of the opposition parties are going to be invited to just observe one, but you can't question or speak or influence at all. It's literally so that you can see that it's it's happening fairly. Thought you might like that. And, and yeah, I'm looking forward to talking about it. ONS, I'm not too sure when my date is for ONS, but I'll certainly fill you in further at ONS. And it's really quite exciting. So yeah, thank you for your question. Do you want to know what the question was that we sent out in the six thousand letters? I made a note of it just in case you did, because I think we got this question right and it was. How can Preston work together to address the opportunities and challenges of climate change in a way that is fair to everyone? So we thought that was simple and punchy and it, yes, it attracted one and a half percent of the people that got the letters and apparently that's about normal. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Have you any supplementary?
Observation, Mr Mayor. I hope this is a subject that's not going to go very, at least in the near future and in the long future. And I hope that we can sincerely hope we can build on this and go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Rigby. Constable Walker, please.
Very useful. I got accosted on the way in and I don't know who to ask this question to because I didn't know the answer to it. This burly guy came up to me and said, what's going on with that building there at Earl Street? And I didn't have an answer for him. So if he could have an answer on the way out, if I get accosted again, I can give him the answer, an update basically on early house, is it? A Mounders House?
Are we talking about the hotel or the one next door? This house? Well, yeah. A Mounders House, yeah, that is something that we're redeveloping. Part of the Townsmen Scheme again, we expect work to be starting, I think, later this year and it's open in 2026. Again, this is going to be a situation where it's actually the building where people used to be put on trial and it's been empty for over thirty years and it's going to be refurbished, it's going to be local businesses operating within it. There's going to be a courtyard which the public can view and it's going to be managed by a local company. So I'll get you a further update on it, but it's one of many schemes that we're doing in addition to the cinema, the youth zone, the Harris and the rest of it. So we expect it to be starting later this year and completed in 2026, part of Townsmen Project. Hope that's okay.
Yeah, Constable Henshaw.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just a bit surprised you're asking this actually, David. It's been to planning and everything. There's all, all the plans are online. It's going to be beautiful.
Have you supplementary? No, thank you. Constable Saxena, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to the leader. As council will be very much aware, Preston's economy was very severely affected by the coronavirus pandemic. And I'm asking the leader how this how this city is performing since restrictions were lifted? And we began to sorry, began our post-Covid recovery.
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Very important question indeed. I mean, the pandemic, it's seems like a long time ago, but it wasn't in the wider scheme of things and we rightly did shut the economy down a lot of the economy to make sure public health is protected. So the statistics are pretty good and these have just been released by government very recently. So for example, in terms of the employment rate within Preston between September 2021 and September 2023, it's increased from sixty-seven percent to seventy-nine percent, which is an increase of twelve percent compared to an increase of one percent across the north-western UK. In terms of the pay of people who are resident within the local authority area, between 2021 and 2023, Preston residents have seen an increase of £120 a week compared to £74 across the north-west and £70 across the UK. Under councillor Wise's portfolio, the Living Wage Foundation confirmed, this is a backdrop to all of it, that of the living wage employees we've had, that by 2023 has seen four thousand and fifty-one workers have their pay uplifted until the real living wage in 2023. We're paying £12 an hour from the first of December, tackling the work poverty. And then also 2023 saw a record fourteen hundred and five housing completions in Preston, including four hundred and thirty-three that's classified as affordable and the majority of these are affordable rents or social rent. We're now getting some social rent properties in the pipeline. And we've always got exercise figures, caution with figures like this because they do tend to fluctuate. But what I can tell you is this economy is improving and a big part of it is the policies that we've chosen politically. These are democratically-led policies and the council itself getting more involved in the city centre economy and regenerating it by developing and owning assets and creating local jobs, supporting local people, local communities and our diverse communities as well. So we've got a good story to tell, but it just shows when we've had austerity and some brutal economic policies imposed by the Conservative nationally, what could we achieve with a change of government? So obviously, we want to see that happen on this side of the house to expand and deepen community wealth building even further. So thank you for the question and happy new year and welcome back, Jonathan. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question? Thank you. Constable May? Constable Henshaw? Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Seven. So we move on to item number seven, which is a report on a health collaboration business. Item number six is a report on a Microsoft enterprise licence agreement 2024-27. Constable Desai, I believe you are moving this report.
Yes, Mr Mayor, that's correct. This is for Microsoft use licence, which will require for the stated three years. The cost is about £200 per employee. And it's, we're so reliant on Microsoft now.
And it's, we're so reliant on Microsoft now. It's something that we, we need to have. We've moved to the cloud, everything, a lot of, lots of the things that we use are with Microsoft. And it's something that we need to, to, to source. So I move, move this report.
Thank you, councillor Desai. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Brown. Are there any amendments into this? Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a quick question on the report and I know that we seem to have got a better deal than we had previously. What concerned me in section six, there was no alternative options considered. That just felt like a bit of a fait accompli to me. So can I ask the member why that was the case?
We've all our communication systems we use with Microsoft or Excel, Word in terms of emails, et cetera. There is nothing else to, that comes close to be able to compete with them in terms of security, et cetera. So it's something that everybody uses, all councils use. We go through a a legal framework in order to obtain it. And that is the only option that we have in effect, is the only game in town. If there is an alternative that you think we could, we could use, I'm happy to, to go, have a dialogue about that.
Thank you, councillor Desai. Any more questions on this item? So any amendments to this? Or do you want to come back, Mr Brown, councillor Brown? No? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Item number seven is a report on a health collaboration between Preston City Council and Lancashire County Council, 2024/29. Councillor May, are you moving the report?
I am, Mr Mayor. Yeah, this report is, as it says, it's asking council to agree to a collaboration between Preston City Council and Lancashire County Council on their healthy weight programmes, healthy weight for adults as well as children and families. In the past, LCC have delivered this programme themselves through the Director of Public Health best offices. But for this year and going forward, LCC are, have asked for expressions of interest to work in collaboration with them. Actually, all 12 districts of Lancashire have expressed an interest to do this work. And there's been a task and finish group working for two or three months now, looking at the way it's been delivered in the past, the successes, the failures and looking at how we as a local authority can deliver the best possible service for our residents. So in essence, it's just, it's asking for permission really to enter into this collaboration and accept the funding that goes alongside it.
Thank you. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor. Any, any question on this item? Councillor Reardon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to say, yeah, councilman, I think it's important that we do this at Preston City Council. I know that before you couldn't do it because of lack of resources, but it's good to see that we're going to take this forward now because it is a real issue in Preston. So I'm happy to support this totally.
Thank you. I don't know whether you want me to respond to that, but yes, there was definitely a lack of resources previously, but there was also a bit of a lack of will on behalf of the county council, but I think, you know, it's been seen over the past 18 months in particular, I think, that we've, we've started to work much closer in partnership with them on various health and wellbeing issues. And I think with the coming of the ICB and the ICP and the setting of local health and wellbeing partnerships, it's brought us closer together. And of course, you know, the more we work in partnership, the better the results should be.
Thank you. Councillor Wise.
Yeah, obviously I support this, but just want to, I'm sure you're going to agree with me that obviously one of the big issues with obesity in children is caused by poverty in this country because a lot of the food that is available and that families can afford actually isn't your healthy food. It actually is the food that actually contributes to our children being obese. So I think you have to set this in context of what is happening in this country with the cost of living crisis and many, many families struggling and therefore looking at what's cheapest rather than what is best to buy.
Yeah, thanks councillor Wise. You're absolutely right, of course, but that's a part of this programme is the pasta part, which also encourages more physical activity and helps families to actually learn to cook together and to learn about basic ingredients since quite often, basic ingredients are much cheaper than, for example, takeaway foods. So yeah, that's a big part of the programme. It's helping people, families in particular, to understand what they can do to actually maintain healthy weight and wellbeing.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to come in on this. I know councillor Wise, you mentioned this is because of poverty. I think also one of the biggest things is this is because of the lack of education and the knowledge to actually make cheap food. There is cheap food available. Takeaway food is not cheap and it is terrible. I mean, it's basically fresh fruit, fresh vegetables are cheap and you can get certain types of meat cheaper. So don't take into account that it is wholly down to poverty. It's all down to education and, and how you cook the meals. And also it's down to time as well. I think people, when they, when they've got kids are stuck for time and it's easier to grab a takeaway or a bag of something frozen. So I think it would be a good idea if you sort of looked into the education of cooking for people from, who are, who have these problems.
Thank you. Councillor Calm.
Yeah, if I could just add that we as a council are already operating educational programme, cooking with families that can't afford, you know, fresh food. We're using our allotments. So there's many programmes that are in place with our food hubs that are operating in Preston.
Thank you. Councillor May.
Thank you. I'll just come back on what councillor Thompson had to say. Yes, in part, you're right, and people do tend to pick up easy meals, ready meals, but not the ones that can't afford it, I'm afraid. And I do actually take a bit of issue about you saying that fresh fruit and vegetables are cheap. Because actually you can get some cheap, but when I go to the supermarket these days, it costs me far more for my fruit and veg than it does for the meat and fish. So it's not, it's not a cheap option, but it's a much healthier option. It's a much better option. And on options, it's a pity really that Rishi Sunak didn't offer to eat healthily rather than eat out to help the economy during Covid.
Yeah, councillor Walker.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I beg to differ. I've just read today on BBC, a lady went on to a vegan diet, which goes against the grain. I read the full article and it was cheaper to go on a vegan diet, healthy diet than it was to have a meat diet. So it was cheaper to eat healthier. I quote, BBC, if you want to look at it, find by me.
We all, we all know how much truth there is in broadcasts, in the media at times. I can only tell you what my shopping bill is and I can assure you that I spend more on meat and veg than I do on fishing, more on veg and fruit, sorry, than I do on meat and, and fish.
Any, any further questions? Are there any amendments? If not, can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Gary. Yeah, this item number eight, this item has been withdrawn, so we move on to item number nine. It's okay now, yeah. Item number nine is a report on additional council tax premiums on second homes and empty properties. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report?
Yes, thank you. New legislation allows us to charge double council tax a year earlier than before. I believe this is designed really to encourage owners of empty homes to bring them back into use faster and perhaps indicate that, you know, owning a second home is a luxury and you're going to have to pay for the privilege. There are exceptions to this. If someone finds themselves in a situation that is not really of their own doing, a strange concept, owning a house by accident or, but it does actually happen. There are some strange circumstances out there and there are, there is some discretion we can apply for this and we do do that quite regularly. But obviously it, it has the potential to raise extra cash for this council, which is obviously much needed. And it is a difficult charge to collect. It's, it's not a popular charge amongst second homeowners and empty homeowners, but we'll do our best to collect it and obviously use the cash for better things. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rollinson. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Brown. Any questions on this item? Yes, councillor Borough.
Does the deputy leader agree with me that it's somewhat strange that when we talk about council tax, we're talking about a tax base that was set over 30 years ago? And it's somewhat strange that it's, there's never been a revaluation, it's never been looked at again. And it no longer reflects the true proportionality between properties across the city and in Preston across the rest of the country.
It is strange. You, you would think that, you know, properties of a certain quality in a certain place perhaps wouldn't change their value that much. Obviously they go up in value, but in terms of the place in the strata, it would remain similar. But of course, in 30 years, lots of things changed, you know, the whole economy and new, lots of new things get built and you really think it needs looking at again. Obviously, there's lots of debate around whether it, there should be, council tax should be a property tax. And, you know, I'd be in favour of, of having a good look at it. It's, it's a national issue. It's not, it's not for us to, to lead on, but it is time, yes.
Thank you, councillor Port.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, just agreeing with councillor Borough that it's, it's clumsy, it's out of date, it's disproportionate. Council tax has had its day and we all remember that it came in in a rush after the Liberals took the Ribble Valley by-election from the Tories in 1991. They quickly had to get rid of the poll tax and this is what they brought in instead. But actually, it's ridiculous. After I graduated from uni, there were six of us all fully paying, all in full employment, paying the same as a couple and the adjacent property. It's, it has no semblance of fairness in it, other than a small increase in bands, which don't really make a lot of difference anyway. The whole system needs to be scrapped. I'd be, I'd love it for the Labour Party to adopt that and actually think of a more fairer localised income tax rather than council tax at the moment because it disproportionately hurts our residents and hurts the poorest residents as well.
Thank you. Any more questions on this item? Do you want to come back, Mr Rollins?
Just really quickly, I mean, property tax, which is, you know, effectively also a land tax, is a progressive tax. You can't say there's no semblance of fairness in it. The fact that you own a piece of land in a certain place and some are more valuable than others, that's reflected in council tax. There is some fairness in it. I'm not saying it's completely fair and you'll struggle to find a tax that is completely fair perhaps, but I do agree it needs looking at.
Thank you. Do you want to come back, councillor Brown? Thank you. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Sorry. Abstentions. Okay, thank you. Scary. Item number 10 is a report on the Changing Futures Programme funded budget increase. Councillor Calm, will you be moving the report?
Yes, I will, Mr Mayor. Yes, this is the Changing Futures Programme Budget Increase. Report is requesting that council approves funded budget increase for the continuation of the Community Futures Programme. The budget increase is £493,367 for delivery into 2025. This programme started in 2022. The current funding has ceased. Preston City Council will continue to act as the lead organisation covering the front print of Preston, Trolley, South Ribble and West Langs. Community Futures Lancashire has pledged to help a further 150 people, of which 34 will be looked after in central west and in Preston in particular. The majority of these being Preston residents. The aim of the Community Futures Programme is to deliver improvements at both individual level, service level and systems level to stabilise and improve the life situation of adults who have complex needs. For example, are homeless, have suffering substance misuse, at risk of domestic violence. So it's these particular vulnerable people that the programme supports. So I hope the council will approve this funded increase. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Calm. Is, is that seconded? Thank you. Any, any question on this item? No. Are there any amendments? Do you want to come back, councillor Calm? No. Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Scary. Item 11 is the notification of changes to the membership of the committees. Are there any changes to be reported? Yes, councillor Brown.
Mr Mayor, just a couple from our side. So councillor Afsl will remain on the planning committee, but she will be replaced by councillor David Borough as vice chair of the committee. And also councillor Varty will replace councillor Afsl on the crime and disorder committee. So that's it from our side, Mr Mayor. So that's it from our side, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 12 is a notice of motion submitted by councillor Dwyer entitled Opt Out HIV Testing. Councillor Dwyer, please can you move your motion?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's a pleasure to bring forward this motion to the council and I thank you for the opportunity to do so. And I have done so with the support both of my group and of the Terence Higgins Trust. The government and opposition alike currently have a commitment to ending new HIV cases and transmission in the UK by 2030. It's possible, but it's not probable as yet and time is running out as we approach 2030. So we need action at all levels of government, both from the highest and to local government here today. And we get there through a clear course of testing, prevention and care. Now, in testing, at the moment, every person who leaves an A and E unit across the country and of all Preston and Sharrig Green is a case missed, an opportunity missed for testing for HIV and other bloodborne viruses such as Hep B and C. In London, Brighton and more locally in Manchester and Blackpool, there currently is opt out testing for HIV and bloodborne viruses in place as a government pilot. And last year, just last year, 2,500 people were identified with HIV, Hep B or Hep C coming out of these A and E clinics. That is a huge amount and that is a huge opportunity to provide caring support for these people who would not otherwise have had it. In prevention, we know that PrEP has been a game changer in treating HIV and access to it shows just how far we've come since the 80s and 90s. A time when my own mother worked with AIDS charities across Preston and Lancashire. And at that time, there was very little education, there was a great deal of stigma, even from doctors who simply thought that you couldn't shake the hand of a patient who had HIV and AIDS. And she spent some time with those who were left completely alone at the end of their lives at that time. We've come a long way since and I'm sure that councillor Borrow later will explain some of that from his own experience. But nonetheless, many of us, many still wait more than 12 weeks to get access to PrEP. And we know that women and those from ethnic minority backgrounds are those who are still less likely to even attempt to access PrEP. Now, I'm pleased already from just having this motion here today, we've already had the council commit to something regarding this. And that this year, the council's agreed to waive the fee for public health PrEP bus to come to the flag market for National HIV Testing Week, which is at the start of February. And so my thanks to Tim Joel and his team for that. Education awareness and visibility all tackle stigma. And that's how we've come a long way since. And local action contributes to this national goal. And so lastly, in terms of care, through collaboration with third sector and health services, as per the motion, in particular our sexual health services locally, we're able to identify those who are lost of care. Those who have dropped out of vital care or those who struggle to self-medicate. These individuals are disproportionately women of black ethnicity, living in poverty or are carers, which accounts for a great deal of our diverse city. And we know that through diversity comes a need for diverse solutions and diverse care. And so as a council from this proudly diverse city, we have to remain as close to our communities as possible to do what we need to do to achieve this national goal, ending HIV transmission by 2030. So with the actions of this motion, I do believe we can play our part as a local authority to make the possible probable and play our part in ending new cases of HIV in the UK by 2030. I implore all sides in the chamber today to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dwyer. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Borrow. Do you want to speak on it?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I think if you'll indulge me a little bit, I could go back to 40 years ago. And as a younger man growing up in Preston, it was a scary time. And there are people I knew, friends and just acquaintances, who didn't survive the 80s. And there was no cure, there was no treatment and there was a lot of stigma. I can remember that the then chief constable of Greater Manchester used language which was absolutely appalling. And there was a lot of homophobia about at that time. But of course, it wasn't simply gay men who were HIV positive. It was people using cherry needles, people who'd had blood transfusions and many other people. So things have changed massively over that period. But it took a long time before there was any drugs that made a difference. Unlike Covid, where they sorted out a vaccine very quickly, there still isn't anything which will actually cure. What you can get now is a mix of drugs, which suppresses the viral load, which means that it's very difficult to pass on infection. And the cocktail of drugs that are available also make it less likely, virtually impossible for the effects of AIDS to come through. And the immune system is maintained for most individuals. And of course, people become a bit complacent about the risk of it. So there are many people who are HIV positive, who don't realise they are positive and are passing it on to other people. And like other diseases that have been eliminated or almost eliminated in the past, we can virtually eliminate HIV, but it is testing, getting people the treatment. And if they're on the treatment, the viral load is so low that even if they don't practise safe sex, it's virtually impossible for the infection to be passed on. So I think this is a really important initiative. I think the issue of HIV has gone off the radar to a certain extent. I can remember when I was in Parliament, I was chair of the all party HIV and AIDS group. When I came away from Parliament, 2010 to 2013, I was a trustee of the George House Trust in Manchester, which is the biggest HIV charity in the North West. I had to come back when I went to LCC because I was in charge of procurement. And the George House Trust was one of the organisations bidding for contracts in public health. But things have moved on massively. But when I just look back now in my 70s to where things were 40 years ago and where we are now, now it's transformational. And it does give me optimism that as other nasty bugs emerge in the future, as they surely will, that if we tackle it properly, both in a public health way and a scientific way, there will always be hope that we'll get through it and a way of solving the problem will be found. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Borrow. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, thank you for bringing this up. I think it is of equal importance to all parties. I think it's not a particularly party specific issue. Unlike David, I'm getting a bit older as well now. So I can remember back to when it first started to rear its head. And in fact, I was living in Miami at the time and it was very visible there. There was people, it was actually getting to be, you could see it was a heterosexual disease as well as being a gay disease. And I think Margaret Thatcher didn't really know what to do about it. It was the fact that Norman Fowler really had the insight to see him and actually started the Don't Die of Ignorance campaign, which I think was very effective and which I think it probably saved a lot of people. Today, I think Victoria Atkins, who's the health minister, she's, her parents live in Garstang by the way. But she's actually extended this programme across to 46 ERs, emergency rooms today. So that will be very helpful. It's a terrible disease and I remember my dad, who was a medic in the Royal Navy. And he always said, you've not got to let prejudice or preference get involved in solving a scientific or a health issue. And I think that's probably where Norman Fowler had a bit of insight. And then of course, since then, you've got the Terence Higgins Trust and the Elton John Foundation who've pushed this along as well. And I think it's a massive, as you said, it's a massive leap forward. We've got to the point where we are now. I think I was married, I haven't been married that long. So sometimes I think there but for the grace of God, go I. You cannot see this sort of disease, you just don't know. It doesn't come with a label. So I think it's important that we try and eliminate it completely. To eliminate it completely, I think it will be quite difficult because we do have people coming in from high risk areas into the country. We've also got sex tourism, where people, and especially all the people who are one of the high risk areas, go out abroad for sex. So hopefully, we can get script with it. And I think education and pushing this on the agenda will help to inform people and maybe more people get tested. And maybe we can get somewhere near to eliminating HIV. To actually eliminate it in this country would be a massive plus and I think it would be excellent. So thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Rotherham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm just going to speak in support of this and thank you for councillor Dwyer bringing the motion to us. I think one of the biggest challenges is the stigma associated with going to get tested. And then the shortage or the underfunding in the sexual health services that this country offers. And so as a consequence, opportunities are missed if anyone has a suspicion or a concern. It can take days for appointments to come through or to be able to access some of those limited services. And that has an impact. So I think working in the NHS, I think a lot of colleagues in the health sector and in the wider voluntary community that work around these issues around health in the community are actively supporting this proposal. So I think it's really great that you brought this motion today. And thank you David for speaking and moving as you did also wholeheartedly to support this. And I think it'll make a real difference to people and it helps de-stigmatise what is effectively a public health issue. And I'll just add in perspective that often we looked to HIV AIDS through a lens of LGBT experience and identity. And I'd just like to remind colleagues that this is actually a gender equity issue and it's a disability equity issue. Because when one has HIV, you effectively have a disability. That has a disproportionate impact on some people at different points of their lives. They need to be able to access support and services and having that diagnosis allows you to do so. On the gender equity piece, I'd just say this, that the highest spike in infection rates in this country are among women now, which is unusual, we tell people so. And I think it's important that people don't automatically think about those things. And when you're in an A and E facility, for example, it's very easy, you're already in that clinical setting. And when you're in that clinical setting, you're more likely, more prepared to have that additional extra test. And I think that just makes such a huge difference to the quality of people's lives. But also in helping reduce some of those costs, the later the diagnosis, the higher the costs. So early detection, early interventions allow for lowering the cost and that leads to better quality of life, better ability to adapt to the change that one needs to make. But it also helps protect the wider community and services as well. So well done for bringing it, I really support this and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you councillor Rotherham. Councillor Dwyer, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I want to echo a lot of what's already been said and thank you very much for bringing this forward today. Of course, HIV and AIDS is a disease that has traditionally affected far more deprived people and communities who perhaps lack the representation over the years and has already been said so eloquently by others, particularly by councillor Borrow. It has affected the LGBT community in particular. I know many people who are still scarred and still scared from their time during the 1980s when their friends were dying around them. Some of them before they even knew what it was that was killing them. And the stigma that was then created as part of that, possibly even deliberately built upon as a part of that, as part of the culture war of the day. And some of that stigma, of course, still survives with us today. I know some people, some of my friends have got HIV who are around my age, so completely different generation, but they still live with that stigma that survives with us even today. So anything that makes it easier for people of all ages, all genders, all sexualities to get tested as a part of normal life has got to be a good thing. The world is of course so much more tolerant nowadays and science has come a long way, as we've heard. We've got non-detectable, non-transmissible, as the Terence Higgins Trust goes out of its way to try and promote that, to help get rid of some of that stigma. We've got PrEP, as Connor already said earlier. Science has come on a long way to what it was. And having this opt out is an excellent opportunity to be able to catch cases and to deal with it and to finally bring down the curtain of this horror of this epidemic for all those who need it of all sexualities and genders, like I say. So thank you very much for bringing it forward. It means an awful lot to people around Preston.
Thank you councillor Dwyer. Councillor Brown, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you Connor for this motion, I think it's excellent. What I do really like about it is as well as lobbying, it's asking for us to do practical things like work with the integrated curve board to actually roll this out or promote these safety measures across the region. Obviously, I'm old enough to remember this happening at school. Obviously, I used to be, a lot of us used to like Queen. And they were coming towards the end of their career, doing a big tour. And it's amazing how Freddie Mercury was one of the victims and how from being so really vibrant, running around on stage, the disease got in really quickly and the many other people affected, the many people in communities as well. So it was quite devastating. And then we think, times has moved on, but it's still with us and it can potentially cost lives as well. What really did hit home, when I did a bit of research just before, is that there was a NICE report on HIV diagnosis and it does confirm that it still is in the most deprived areas of England, i.e. areas like this. And there's several groups disproportionately affected by HIV, and that includes black Africans, which we're aware of. So as often as we learnt during the pandemic and with other public health matters, it's often people less well off and people from minority communities and beyond that do disproportionately suffer. So to prevent that from happening, we need to ensure that people can have testing as easily and readily available and cheaply available. And this motion will do this going forward. You know, obviously, there are ways out there to prevent the spread to AIDS or HIV and obviously keep the virus at bay. We've got to make sure that's available to everyone regardless of income or ethnicity or sexuality or gender. So happy to support this, Mr Mayor. I think it's a brilliant motion and hopefully we can work on how we can do things practically tomorrow when it's passed, which I'm sure it will be. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brown. Councillor Wys, please.
Obviously, I support this motion and a bit like councillor Borrow, I'm going to indulge in that the organisation that gave Terence Higgins Trust their first staff was the Greater London Council when I was a member of it in 1985. And interestingly enough, Tory Westminster Council challenged the decision that we made. And actually, we had to go to court and luckily for the Terence Higgins Trust, the High Court overruled Westminster Council. So as I say, I fully support this, but I just think if it hadn't been for the GLC, we wouldn't have had those first page staff for the Terence Higgins Trust. So it just shows it's sometimes worth remembering what happened in the 80s from a positive perspective. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Wys. Is there any further questions anymore? If not councillor Dwyer, do you want to come back?
I will just very quickly say, Mr Mayor, thank you to everyone who spoke. And it's clear that there is cross-party consensus on this, which is really positive to see. So thank you to everyone who's shown the word of the forward. And obviously, just to publicly say to the chamber and on the record, my thanks to the Terence Higgins Trust, the National AIDS Trust, the Elton John AIDS Foundation and to all other HIV AIDS charities, particularly those working locally and to our local health services and sexual health services. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Gary, thank you. Item number 13 is a report on changes made to the constitution. Councillor Rollinson, do you wish to speak on the report which is for noting only?
Yeah, changing personnel gives us the opportunity just to realign some of the responsibilities. That's all it is.
Thank you. Can we now note the item? Show of hands. Thank you. Item number 14 is the leaders' report. Councillor Brown, do you wish to speak on the report which is for noting only? Thank you. Can we now note the item? Show of hands, please. Thank you. Item 15 is a special Item fifteen is a special urgency decision, but there are none to report to this meeting. The next meeting of full council will be the extra full council meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, thirty-first January two thousand and twenty-four at four PM in the town hall, Preston. The next ordinary meeting of the full council will be the budget meeting, which will be held on Thursday, twenty-ninth February two thousand and twenty-four at two PM in the town hall, Preston. So thirty-first January is four PM. Item number seventeen. Now, we need to consider passing the following resolution that the public the public be excluded from this meeting during the consideration of the following item of business on the grounds of that there is likely to be disclosure of exempt information which is described in the paragraph of Schedule twelve A to the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, which is specified against the headings to the item and that in all the circumstances of the case, the public interest in maintaining the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing it. Are you all happy to agree the exemption and move to part B?